One more time. It's just a couple of minutes after 6:30 here, so I'm gonna go and call us to order, and we've got... Thank you all, that's kinda new. I guess we'll be sending that every month, Director?
Yes.
Alright.
Special thanks to Lauren Berry and JP Finnegan. They put their creative abilities together to create that. This is something that on before all city meetings, there's a video, or short video, that'll be running, and this is the one that'll run for the planning commission meeting.
With that, I'm going to ask that we be opened up with prayer, and I'm gonna put Alderman slash Commissioner Martin on the spot here, if you'll lead us in prayer to open this up, please.
...our discussions. Give us insight and courage to do your will with compassion and reverence as stewards and companions for the benefit of our beloved city by the lake. Help us to know and believe in the gifts you have given us as trustees, both individually and collectively. Inspire us to solve the challenges we may face today. In faith and hope, we trust in your presence and guidance today. Amen.
Amen. For being put on the spot, you did very well. Thank you.
Hey, you're ready.
Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Here.
Coker.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Slattery.
Here.
And Silkwood.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. I'm assuming all the commissioners got the opportunity to look over it. Is there any suggestions for changes that would be made? Hearing none, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood, and a second from Commissioner Slattery. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll then go into item four, which is public hearings. This is a course of a continuation from last month's public hearing on the West Lake at Hendersonville Future Land Use and Framework Plan. We have two additional speakers that have signed up this evening. The first one would be John Prentis. Will you step to the podium, please? And I know you've done this before, but will you state your name again and your address, please?
I'm John Prentis, 111 Airflow Drive, Hendersonville. Won't take your time much tonight. Primarily, I want to stand up here and say thank you. Thank you for listening, which according to what I read in the minutes of the, in the agenda tonight, you folks listened, and you listened very well. Thank you very, very much. One minor suggestion I'll leave on the table, I suggested last time. I think this plan is getting very close to what could be considered done. I think it needs to get to the Board of Mayor and Alderman ASAP. We're at a point where you can assign zoning where it changed, and a lot of it did change right there in that corridor. That needs to be done right away, and get to the board to adopt that zoning. That just keeps out future fights over spot zoning and that kinda thing. So anyway, with that, thank you again, and have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Prentis. And it looked like we had a late addition from Vicki Woods. Would you step up and introduce yourself and give us your address, please?
Yes, my name is Vicki Woods, 109 Saddle Drive. I'm here to speak about Free Hill Road. This is just a small portion of the people who grew up on Free Hill. It's a historically black area. In the back of Free Hill Road, we have our family graveyard with generations and generations of family here, there. A lot of us, that will be our final resting place. And we just, you know, I hear that as of late, the graveyard, cemetery has been preserved. I'm not exactly sure what all that covers, but there are unmarked graves there that go further back than I think a lot of people know. So, so we wanna make sure that all of that's preserved, but we also want, we're concerned because that whole Free Hill Road area is historical, because that's where, you know, we were designated as far as where to live in Hendersonville, and we couldn't go anywhere else. So we're concerned, and we want that historical significance to remain, if at all possible. So, so that's why, like I said, this is just a small portion, but we do have concerns about that, and we wanna, you know, we wanna be on top of what's going on. We're kinda, you know, finding out late that there were some things being built up there. I don't know exactly what all is gonna be built up there, but we wanna make sure that that's taken under consideration, that that is a historical area.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Anybody else want to speak that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed, and we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from last month. Again, I think every commissioners have been passed out, and everybody's got an opportunity to review. Is there any changes that need to be made to the minutes from last month?
Move to accept as is.
We have a motion to accept as is.
Second.
And we have a second. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is item six. It's our consent agenda. It looks like we've got two items on it. Director, I'll let you address these very, very quickly on this, please.
Yes, both of these items on our consent agenda. The first item is Cherokee Woods Subdivision, Part Two, re-sub of lots 23 and 25. This was just an adjustment of a joint access between these properties. They kinda moved some things around, and all the property owners are working together to make that happen. They've agreed to all staff comments, and everything is in order with that. So not a real big deal, it's just a little technical moving around. Smiles by Samantha, this is, this is a new dental office. This is, this is that site where Bad A Coffee was looking to go. I'm keeping it G. And so at that location, so that, I think that'll be a nice addition. They're next to Dollar General, in between, sandwiched in between Dollar General and the daycare facility. So those are the two things, and they have also agreed with all staff comments.
Thank you, Director. I'm gonna entertain a motion now to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to accept the consent agenda with all staff comments as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner. And is that, was that from Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
We'll have some Big A Coffee over here, please.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item seven, site plans. This is for, and I'm gonna try to pronounce it right, because I know depending on where you're from, what the pronunciation's a little bit different, but Whataburger on that. Do we have a representative from the developer here to speak? Would you come up to the podium, please? And in a moment, I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself. First, I'm gonna let Timothy tell us what we've got here.
Yes, so Whataburger is going where the old Black I P used to be, and for a while it was gonna be Martin's Barbecue, but now Whataburger is proposing to build a 3,305 square foot building there. Tear down the old building, scrape the site, put up a new building, new infrastructure. They will have nineteen, they'll have a double, a double drive-through, 19 stacking spaces, and they'll, they'll have 34 parking spaces. On their, their building, they've come a long way from where they were before. Staff still has some outstanding, some comments for them to address, and they've agreed to work with staff to get all of those resolved to staff satisfaction. So they're asking for y'all's approval. They've, they've agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you, Timothy. Is there anything you'd like to, firstly, introduce yourself, if you don't mind, please, and if there's anything that you wanna add?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Brett Beeler, 10 Leah Avenue, Suite 400, Nashville, Tennessee, 37210. Yeah, I mean, all the quick things is, we've, we definitely agree with all the site plan comments. We're still working on the architectural elevations and the exterior cladding. We have worked with TDOT, I think, as well as staff on that joint call to work through the site plan revisions, as noted. Yeah, nothing, nothing much more to add.
Now gonna open up to questions, comments from the commissioners, and I think the first one that saw light up here was Commissioner Slattery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for investing in Hendersonville. We don't have to be jealous of Gallatin anymore in Sumter County. I am very curious about what period of time you feel like there will need to be extensive traffic management?
Right.
I know the first one that came into Nashville, and forgive me, I don't know where it is, but we went, and I nearly died that day in a parking lot. That's large enough to accommodate, I think, a Home Depot, and it was still beyond belief. So I'm just curious what you're anticipating the, the heavy intense opening traffic period to be.
Yeah, so obviously, we hit that sort of big opening peak, right? And then we slowly start to diminish down. We won't see it as high as the other ones in Tennessee, mainly because as they, as these additional stores start to open up, some of the novelty, if you will, dies down. But we've got data that, that kind of dictates where we expect the peaks to be. Obviously, it's opening week, and then it dwindles down, but the opening month is the main target that we're looking to identify. Some historical data, we see like 8,000 to 9,000 peak, but we're seeing the Lebanon and Gallatin locations average about 6,000 a week, which is more than fine for it to handle and not queue up. But we have adequate queuing space and storage for that, for the opening and the peak sort of scenarios.
Okay.
And so we've, I believe those traffic plans have been shared, and if not, I'm happy to walk through them.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for not being a chicken restaurant.
Commissioner Hasty?
Traffic is gonna be a problem with people getting in and out on Gallatin Road, I think. Have you given any consideration to some traffic directional signs on-site that would encourage people to exit the rear and go to the traffic signal on Cherokee Road?
Not really providing, you know, signage to route that way. Obviously, the south, the site circulates around the building and faces them out towards East Main Street as they complete the loop of, you know, getting serviced by the building. But working through TDOT, we have limited access to East Main Street by making that previously two-way street now just a one-way from East Main. And that's mainly for fire and for...
And I agree, but I think it, you know, at peak hour traffic flows on Gallatin Road, I think your customers would be a whole lot safer making a left turn in front of the building and circling back and coming out at a traffic light at Cherokee Road.
They certainly have that motion, but...
I know they have that, but I've been saying that I think you should do some signage to encourage them to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly doable. I mean, a simple one sign saying...
Okay, agree to do that, okay? You know, otherwise, you know, I'm hoping that brick tones down some of that color. I'm not particularly crazy about a lot of blue and orange and everything else right on Main Street when we wouldn't even allow Kmart to change the blue on their building. But I realize it's a company thing, you know, but when Popeyes came to town, I remember some discussion here at this table. We wanna make that Popeyes design in such a way that if Popeyes ain't there, we're not stuck out with a big Popeyes building, and it's something that is reusable. You know, and I'll show my age now, I still know the A-frame down here in front of Rivergate, that was a Whataburger. And I can't get Whataburger out of my mind every time I see that A-frame down there. And if y'all leave this building, it'll be a Whataburger forever, and Hendersonville will be stuck with it, just like the A-frame. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin, you've been a little off the walls.
Oh, sorry.
I thought it was Longmire next. I have some concern about how popular Whataburger is, and I've never eaten at a Whataburger. I'm sure it's delicious, but I'm concerned about how they get out on Gallatin Road. And of course, peak times to buy hamburgers is really challenging, but it's also challenging at any time unless you come at 11 o'clock at night, if y'all happen to be open at that hour. So I do have some, some great concerns about the traffic. Gallatin Road has gotten to be really, really busy, really, really congested, and it's hard to pull out. And you still have people who wanna come out from that side of the road and make a left-hand turn, for crying out loud. Cross two lanes of traffic, one turn lane, and hopefully get into that first lane there. Have you all looked into any other things that could be done that would alleviate some of that?
Well, I think to Commissioner's main point, I think we could provide some signage that could route them the alternate way and get them back to that light. I think that's one of the main easiest things that we can do, certainly.
And that's suggestions?
Yes.
That's not a mandate?
Correct.
You know what works?
Say it one more time.
Do you know what works?
Yes.
Mandates, not suggestions.
Correct. Signage only helps so many...
Only suggestion applies to everybody but me.
Right.
And we're in quite of a me society right now. I just think about what I've seen about Whataburger and how popular it is, and of course, everybody wants to eat at the same time. So that's my biggest concern. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Longmire. I just wanna point out that I think there's been a change up on the screen that's, for commissioners here, where this is the most recent site plan is now showing on the screen on that.
And I would add one thing that I'll address.
Director, free.
I would just add one quick thing, and I think I'll address a little bit of this, is that one of the things that, that our city engineers' office is requiring is a plan for how they're gonna handle that initial heavy volume. So, you know, the site handles, handles normal volume, but we know when it opens, it's gonna be a heavy volume. So we're requiring, and they've agreed to provide a plan on exactly how they're gonna manage that, you know, whether that be adding cones or signage, or how they would stage their employees on the drive-through to get people through in that heavy, heavy time. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Director Frigg. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for investing in Hendersonville, and just echoing what, what some of the other commissioners said, specifically Commissioner Hasty. I would like to see some signage encouraging your patrons to exit back onto that alley or accessway onto the light there at Cherokee. I would appreciate that. But one thing I would like to dig into a little bit deeper is the exterior design elements, and maybe that's something, you know, Timothy and you can kinda guide us through, what's, what's changing, what is sort of in the works to be discussed and kinda hammered out between you all and staff? Maybe we could kinda go through that a little bit more? You know, in my packet, it's a little bit difficult to see exactly what's written down here, so it'd be nice to kinda look at that a little more closely, so...
Right. I'll absolutely be the first one to admit that I'm not an architect. I'm not, I'm not the architect, so I'll speak to it as best I can, certainly.
Yeah, I'd be happy to kinda go through the general, there's general comments there. So generally, we have asked for more brick. The elevations show brick going, it shows a stone water table, and then some brick going up about halfway up the building, but then everything above about awning height, I think is, they've got proposed as EPIS. We've asked them to limit that, the amount of EPIS to just kind of the top, the top portion of the building, to add a cornice up there, or a larger cornice at the very top of the building. We have asked for an additional, if you see there on the, on the south elevation, which is, I haven't got my glasses on, I can't see my cursor. Yeah. So this... Yeah, so this, this entry-exit feature here, we've asked them to add that to this, to the front, so that top-right elevation, we've asked them to add that there to kinda help bring some articulation to that street-facing wall. We've asked for the addition of a, some kind of a sill or some kind of demarcation there at the top. That's what that red line is showing. Add, add something here to kind of break up the, the water table from the middle section of the table, of the building, and the middle section from the, the top or the cap of the building, just to give it that kind of hierarchy. We've asked for glass on that bottom right-hand side, which would be the rear, add, add some glass down there. We have asked for additional glass on, on the front elevation, facing the street, on the side elevations. I think the glass you see there is, those are kind of components that I've copied from what they initially supplied and just paste it on there, just to kinda give a general design indication of what we're looking for. And then we've also asked for them to look at ways to kind of, to break up the, the roof line, so it's not just one long, linear, unbroken piece. And also to address the brick color, we're concerned about just the general kind of washed-out, lighter color of the brick. The, the front porch building, on the west side of this lot, is pretty much a white kinda looking building, whitish, creamish, cream-colored brick, and then on the opposite side of this building is also a white, cream-colored building. We'd like to see some, kinda break that up and not have just, you know, three buildings in a row that all have kind of a very similar color tone. So we're asking them to find some darker brick to put on this.
Okay, thank you, Timothy. Just a follow-up question. So on the west elevation, that, the glass that's shown, is that something that, did you say that's something you added in as a possibility?
Yes.
Is that, is that something you all have agreed to?
Yeah, we've agreed to all the recommendations.
All of them, okay.
We're still working through them, but yes, we've agreed to them.
Right. And what about the darker brick color? Because I agree, excuse me, I agree. I think that, you know, with the two lighter colored buildings already there, something a little darker would be, would be nice. And also the roof line, you know, it's, it's bordering on a C container look, it's quite boxy, so anything you can do to kind of vary that roof, I think would, you know, we would end up with a much nicer-looking building that kinda fits the character of Hendersonville a little bit better, so...
Absolutely.
I would echo Mr. Hasty's comments on the design elements, too.
Absolutely. Understood.
And I would point out that the, the blue that you see on your screens is, that's all indicating glass. It's not poster boards or anything. It's, I think it just, it came out a little too blue on, on these elevations, so...
Timothy, so that's, that's just a clear, that's just regular glass, and that's not, okay. I was just thinking that's an awful lot of orange and blue that close to Hendersonville High School. Some folks might get a little... I just have a quick comment, and just, I wanna echo some of the concerns about the traffic on that. It's just, that is a tough place to get in and out of, get in and out of, that whole stretch there from Cherokee Road up to Indian Lake, especially afternoon, it's, I don't like the idea at all of people being able to turn left and go east toward Gallatin that way. It's just, that's just, it's asking for trouble on that. Just, we've got a number of curb cuts there. I'd like to see something to where it's just a right turn only out of there, and really, really try to drive people toward exit and toward the rear, because I'm thinking of y'all's location in Gallatin, and I'm going from memory here on this, but I don't think that there's any access from Gallatin Road or Nashville Pike up there. I think you have to go around on that. It's a similar type setup where there's a back road that you turn in, off, turn off Belvedere and turn left to go in there, and that's worked out very well, it seems like. And this is just kind of a similar stretch of road, just a busy corridor, so I'd, I'd like to see some rework on that, and frankly, in this, you have no control over this, I'd like to see some number of curb cuts through there eliminated, if we could, just because, again, it's just a busy stretch of road, and if there's ever the opportunity for facilities to share, that's something I'd wanna, long-term, wanna encourage. But yeah, I just wanna echo everything else kinda said, people need to exit toward the back and then go out, I guess that's Conway Twitty Boulevard right there, or whatever it's called, so... But any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I've... We can obviously take a motion to approve now here on this, and then you know you've got some feedback on this, it may be something that you wanna defer and come back to, because that's, that's your call on that.
Right, I mean, we, I mean, we'd obviously really, really love to move forward and not lose time on this. I think to main points, we're, we're working with both local law enforcement and the city to handle that peak, you know, opening week, opening month type deal, and, you know, based on traffic studies and working with TDOT, we, you know, our understanding is that traffic is not gonna be an increased problem in this area because of our site. I think we're, we definitely agree to add that extra signage to reroute them around, but I would, I would hate to lose another month and delay the opening and advancement of the site.
Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve with the addition of the signage that Commissioner Hasty mentioned on that.
I'll make a motion with all staff comments and the additional signage. We have every, we have the Wendy's in there, we had the former Krogers, we have Dockers, and I don't think it's right not to tell these people they can't go in, so I'll make that motion.
I think we have a motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second. Commissioner Martin? Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans. Hardwick.
Yes.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Slattery.
Yes.
Silkwood.
Yes.
And Coker.
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, and it's under other category. It's this Wessel Wake at Hendersonville plan. I think we might've talked about this once or twice before. Grant, will you tell us a little bit about the changes from last month, please?
Thank you, Chairman Coker. Yes, sir, we had the changes from the, the last planning commission meeting that were proposed, and then we, we took those to the consultant, and they have amended the plan to show that. There's, there's nine listed in the report, and basically, the, the main things that created the most change, I think, on the plan were the removal of the Anchor West focus area. They had the residential incentive component, which reduced the number of potential residential units by 364 units. And then we also had removal of the Main Street focus area, which also had the residential incentive component to the commercial development. That reduced it down by 281 units. And the Free Hill Plan development on the north side of Gallatin Road, West Main Street, that, that reduced the number of potential units by 456. So essentially, on that, that's, that portion is, the current zoning would just remain the same, because there's, there's no changes on the northern side of Free Hill there, just the, the existing commercial and industrial zoning. Another item is creation of a separate lakefront commercial section with only one story in the Dockside District. That's been changed to the lakeside, the Dockside, Lakeside District, and that, that's number two on the plan there. And reduce the remainder of Dockside to two-story maximum height and 50% residential maximums at five units per acre. That reduced number three there on the plan, the dark red area, that reduced that... dark red area, that reduced that down from three hundred and eighty-one potential units down to sixty-four units, uh, for that, that area. And, uh, um, another item is reduce Dockside mixed-use area from, from ten units per acre to four units per acre, and that is number six on the plan up there, uh, the kind of, that hatched area. And in doing so, that reduced that area down from a potential seven hundred and thirty-five units down to two hundred and ninety-five, uh, residential units. And, um, we also, uh, reduced the Midway Free Hill focus area on the south side there, uh, that's number one, uh, that was initially proposed to be fifteen units per acre, and, uh, that was reduced down to ten units per acre, which resulted in a, a net, uh, resulted in a reduction of one, from one hundred and forty-four units to ninety-five potential units. And, um, in addition, uh, also some of the other comments that we had that we, we added to the plan were, uh, elimination of hotels, senior housing, and independent living uses in much of the Dockside District. And, uh, another u- another item, which I alluded to earlier, was the, um, taking away that, that planned, potential planned development area, uh, there at Free Hill. And, uh, basically, this is the same zoning that's in place right now, and, and just basically leaving that area alone. However, we did, uh, uh, with some discussions, uh, with some of the family members and, and folks representing them, uh, we did show that, uh, as a, I think, number five there on the plan, and, uh, we put that as a religious and cultural preservation area. So, uh, that's been called out on, on the land use plan, um, however, that would be something on the zoning that would be different, but we would, we would have to look at it at that time since it's owned by a property owner, but, um, but that's essentially, that's all the, the changes that we, we had, we addressed all of those, uh, after talking with Kimley Horn, and they took care of all those items, and, uh, in doing so, uh, that, that had a significant reduction in the number of potential residential units. All this, though, would be commercial, like commercially focused, uh, residential growth, so it would be basically just incentive growth to, uh, except for the mixed-use area, um, just incentive growth to try to encourage more commercial redevelopment.
Thank you Grant. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you Ms. Chairman. If we could, um, as, as addressed in the public comments, could we take a look at that section five of the Free Hill, um, road area, the cultural preservation, and take, take a little closer look at that section five, um, and discuss a little bit further to make sure we've got that fully covered, that, uh, historical cemetery and whatnot there?
Yes, we can do that. As, uh, as Mr. Green had stated, the area, and we really can't zoom in, but it's the area right there where the marker is, I think it is, has it got a five on it? Yeah, that was an area that is the Free Hill, uh, the historic Free Hill Cemetery, and, uh, so we didn't have that noted on that, we were aware of it, but it just wasn't noted on the plan, uh, but now it's noted on all different layers of the, of the plan, and so then that's incorporated in the future land use plan. Uh, so, uh, that's, uh, that's, that's pretty important as anybody would look in the future to do any rezonings or development, uh, then that's something that we're, we're aware of. And, uh, and then a lot of the other areas that we have preservation or religious or, uh, or, uh, cultural preservation, uh, those are mostly our churches, some of those churches do have, uh, do have grave sites as well. And, uh, and there are, you know, it's, they're not really defined, uh, but they're certainly as old as this area is throughout the whole area, even outside the borders of it, there's probably, uh, some different, uh, very small grave sites, uh, you know, we have some right here behind us, uh, with the Bradford Berry House, and some of them we sort of know where it's at, uh, but then others that we don't, but, but that area that we defined right there, uh, that, uh, that certainly is a, a, a clear cemetery, I mean, there's monuments and things like that, but, uh, and the issue related to if there's additional things outside of that, uh, then that would be something, as that property developed, then the developer, um, you know, would, would need to take precautions, and then if they ran into something, then it could get costly, uh, and they might have to, you know, uh, to deal with that. So that does happen, you know, from time to time on development, uh, but certainly knowing that there is the, the set cemetery at that location, any development around there, we're going to be letting the developer, now, you know, there's a cemetery there, and, and then especially now, uh, thanks to, uh, Alderman Sassy, uh, has shared with us the, that he met with, uh, met with the group, and, uh, that there's concerns about maybe things beyond the boundary of just when you drive up there and know, okay, that's the cemetery. So we'll share that with developers as they're looking to do different things, so, uh, and we have pre-development meetings, so, uh, in most every occasion, we're going to be talking to developers before they actually start doing their, doing their plans, so we'll share that, share that information. Yeah, Mr. Green?
And, uh, yeah Keith, I also, uh, probably add, uh, that we would encourage anybody to, you know, i- i- if not the, since there's probably a different landowner and, and that owns that property, uh, you could contact the state's archaeological division to kind of see what their, um, what kind of rights that you would have with that, a site like that, so, uh, you, you, we would encourage anybody to do that as well, just to try to, try to see, see what's available out there to help protect those sites.
Thank you Grant. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you Ms. Chairman. Just for, for the benefit of the audience and anyone listening at home, can someone give us a rundown of exactly how many residential units we've reduced from the original Westlake plan to this current plan? Just a roundabout figure would, I think that would be good to know.
Mr. Green has the.
I think, I think we started out with the current zoning with two thousand seven hundred and sixteen, uh, give or take a few, um, and this reduces that down to five hundred and fifty-five potential units. So that's a big reduction.
And, and keep in mind that, um, I can't see the number, but I think it's, uh, two hundred, let me see that, hold on a second. Yeah, that two hundred and ninety-five of that, uh, five fifty-five is actually within that mixed-use neighborhood, which we've limited, it can't be multifamily, it can't be townhomes, it can't be independent living, it can't be senior housing, so really it's just single family. So, we've included that number in that five fifty-five, so half of it really isn't now with the changes that we've made, half of that really isn't, uh, wouldn't really be considered higher density or multifamily, uh, housing. So actually, it's even, it's even actually lower than the five fifty-five, but, uh, but the five fi- five fifty-five is an okay number, you know, for us to use. So it's, it's, it's significantly reduced, and, uh, you know, part of that reduction is, is from, uh, the public sharing over the last six months, their concerns about higher density development and, and some of the things that that brings, higher traffic and, and other things, and, uh, that was something, as we heard at last month's meeting, and I think the, uh, planning commission responded to the public input, uh, and, uh, and the res- and the plan that we have today, this, uh, amended plan draft, uh, is a result of that.
Thank you Director Free. Just wanted, and this may be a question for you, this may be a question for Grant, obviously when we, we spent a lot of time on this last month, and some of the details may, may have gotten lost a little bit, but one thing, and just forgive me if we have addressed this before, but I wanted to go kind of look over in the Dockside section, um, we've got the mixed use there and the backed up to the residential preservation area. I just wanted to kind of get some idea of what the thought process is on how y'all define those, set the boundaries to where they are.
Okay, on the, on the particular, on the Dockside?
Yeah, and specifically what I'm asking, I'm going to be asking about, I'll, I'll kind of narrow it down a little bit more, is, um, that area between, on the north side of Imperial Boulevard, on Chival Drive right there in campus, I know that there are some businesses mixed in right there, but we've got it all as residential right there, I just wanted to kind of know the thought process behind.
Can you point to that on your map?
Yes, yeah, I'm talking about this area right here, because this is Walton Ferry, Noakes, yeah, this is Walton Ferry.
Yeah. Uh, that's the area, I don't, I think we have a map that would represent what, uh, what the chairman's talking about, but he's talking about the area that's the, the blue preservation area, let's see if we can find, find that, I think we have an image of that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's it right there, so what the chairman's talking about is seven right there, where it's all kind of aqua up on the, up on the screen. He's talking about, what was the reasoning north of, is that No- or Noakes?
I was saying, yeah, north of Imperial, that area kind of.
Yeah, on making that residential preservation instead of, of, uh, mixed-use neighborhood, really, that might be something that we could ask Kevin or, you know, our consultant on exactly what that is. I, I think, from what I recall, it had to do with the existing character of the area, it sort of fit, uh, that residential preservation area, but, uh, Kevin maybe can, can shed more light on that, and again, as we're speaking about that, uh, you know, tonight, as we made changes last time, changes can be made this evening as well, and if we find that line isn't exactly where everyone thinks it should be, uh, it could be, could be moved, or it could be increased, or it could be decreased.
And before, I appreciate you stepping up, by the way. The reason I, I brought this up is I just happened to be going through there today, and I noticed that there are four existing business, because this, obviously under the existing zoning, this was Old Town Commercial, that sort of thing, on that, and there's four existing buildings, uh, businesses in there, at least that I just counted, uh, when I was driving, it's mixed in with residential on that, and I'm just wondering why you wanted to take it all the way back to residential on that side. I get it, the other side of Imperial on that, because I think that there's one business on Chival Drive on the other side of Imperial, and so that makes sense on that, so I just wanted to kind of know a little bit about the thought process here.
Sure. Kevin Tilbury, Kimley Horn, um, thanks for inviting me back to, with you all tonight. So I, Keith said it, um, exactly, so we felt that that was a good line to draw, to sort of, it was all consistent with the residential character of the area. That said, you make a good point, that a lot of the existing land uses are commercial, so that's something, I mean, I think we could take another look at, as, as Keith said, we're open to changes again today, we've already made, you know, obviously a lot of changes to address questions and concerns, but if you feel that would be more in line with the mixed-use neighborhood, and, and clearly that area is not residential preservation, that's a little bit of a misnomer, it would be residential and not preservation, because it's not currently residential, but it would be, um, if you feel that it would be more consistent to be included in the mixed-use neighborhood category, I mean, we could certainly make that change pretty easily.
I got a little more on that too. Thank you. Director Free?
Yeah, um, and actually, with the changes that were made since the last meeting, then it kind of cha- it kind of changes everything a little bit on that particular area, where, you know, before we were lumping it in, uh, with that, uh, single-family preservation area, but now with the changes that have been made in six, the maroon area that's, uh, that's sort of hatched up there, the mixed-use neighborhood, with those changes that have been made there, which basically you could do office, you could do commercial, you could do a restaurant, and you can have a single-family, single-family home.
For Yance Breaker, yes.
Which is sort of like what a lot of the area is there, it would be, it would be reasonable to extend that hatch area down to, uh, uh, down to Imperial, and you're not increasing any multifamily residential, uh, so that, you know, that would not, um, you know, before, then there was a potential for independent living, for senior housing, and for dupl- for, for duplexes and townhomes, that was the possibility in the early, in the first draft, but now that's off the table, so moving that, adjusting that mixed-use neighborhood line down to just everything north of Imperial, uh, actually, I, I think that would probably be a pretty good idea, and Grant may, may want to weigh in on that, or if you, you see it any different, Grant?
Yeah, I think that would, if we did something like that, that would match the, essentially the existing Old Town Commercial, uh, Old Town Residential Divide, more or less, uh, so that, that would kind of be, be closer to what our existing zoning allows for, except for the fact that a lot of those other, uh, things in our existing zoning, um, are being removed as part of this plan, so, um, so it would, it would really kind of fall in line with the commercial versus residential divide that we currently have in place.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Director Free, just a question of clarification, so dropping the maroon hashtag number six down to Imperial, all the way over to Sanders Ferry? Or just where the, the vertical line is between six and the, the red three, or it's pink up on the screen?
Right, uh, I, I think it could, it could be either, either one, I mean, it might be cleaner if it went all the way to Sanders Ferry. Yeah, it might be cleaner if it, if it went all the way over there, instead of kind of keeping it, uh, keeping it separate.
My only, my only thought there, concern is that with mixed use, we're giving the opportunity, small office, small business, but we're giving the opportunity for additional traffic beyond single-family home in a pretty good little piece that's everything from Imperial up, it's just that much more traffic on that sweet little spot of Sanders Ferry between Imperial and Main Street, and Walton Ferry and Main Street. I, I don't know that I would necessarily, oh, thank you. Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Oh, it's Hendersonville. I, I just, I question if we're giving the opportunity for that much more potential traffic throughout the day with business there as part of a mixed use.
Yeah, you could, you could, if you stopped it there at Walton Ferry, and the property's just facing Walton Ferry, and then left the remainder as it is in the preservation, that would, that would seem to me to be a good stop, stopping point, if the, if that's what the commission would, would like to do.
That's, to me personally, that seems more reasonable, Sanders Ferry has limited turn and access on that road, where right there at Imperial and Walton Ferry in both directions, you at least do have a turn lane at the intersection to help manage a little bit more of that traffic.
Yeah, I think Haven is, uh, it's mostly a, a single-family residential street through there, so, you know, that, that would be in character with the, by doing that, keeping that block as a preservation.
Yeah, and Commissioner Slattery, just, when I brought this up, that was, I was looking at Walton Ferry as the line of demarcation on that too.
Okay, thank you.
And from a practical standpoint, that area from Walton Ferry to Saunders Ferry, please, there's a large apartment complex there anyway, so from a realistic standpoint, there's not going to be any commercial that would go in there anyway, but yeah, I was just kind of looking at that, from that little sliver from five over to Walton Ferry, because I was also thinking about it too, in that corner of Walton Ferry and Imperial Boulevard, there is, um, either an assisted living or senior living there now. Yeah, and if, I know that it's, it's about thirty-nine, forty years old somewhere in that neighborhood, and if that was to ever be redeveloped, it's not going to get single-family homes in there on that, I mean, so I wanted to be able to just include essentially from five over to Walton Ferry, north of Imperial Boulevard, is six then?
Yes.
Is that all clear as mud?
Yes. And I, I think there is already a little bit of mixed use happening on Chival from Imperial up.
There is, there's, that's, that's what kind of sparked, is I, I saw, I counted three or four businesses that were there, because I know Appalachian Pipeline, for instance, is right there on the corner of Chival and Imperial, and then there's a couple, three other businesses going up through there, so that's, that's where the thought process came from.
Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing nine, um, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve as amended with what we just talked about on six. Commissioner Silkwood? I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented here with the amendment to six going down to Walton Ferry Road, um, from Walton Ferry Road over to five, north of Imperial Boulevard.
I'll make the motion to approve the plan as presented with the change of the area, let's see, north of Imperial Boulevard to Walton Ferry, including Chival, to move it from the number one denotation to a number six, as discussed.
Thank you, Commissioner Althaus. Thank you Mr. Slattery, we get your second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. And just, again, want to commend the planning staff and just the folks we've worked with, consultants, what, this has been a work in progress. Want to commend the community as well for the input on this. This has been one of the most collaborative, transparent processes I've ever seen from city. Want to thank the folks from tonight, Ms. Woods getting up to speak and letting us know about your family's heritage there with that cemetery. And I hope that we've addressed everything on that as well. So I just want to thank everybody for the input on this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-04, a resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets in Hunt Club, phases eight and twelve, Hendersonville, Sumner County, Tennessee. I'll make a motion to approve, to, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. And can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Silkwood. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
That's all nine.
All right, thank you. Item nine is active deferrals. Director Free, I'll, I'll let you touch on these a little bit, and if you need to have staff chime in as well. I believe Grant's on the first one, Sidney's on the second one.
Yeah, the, the first item is, that's an active deferral, is Campus Drive parking lots. This was the property that was the vacation rental and the discussion we had about the parking. They most likely will be coming back at the next meeting. Also, the Curtis Crossroads subdivision, that's the one where the, the access was in that cor, that curve, and the planning staff and the public work staff had, had extreme concerns about that. It's very possible this could be coming back at the next planning commission meeting. We're meeting with the developers again this week to discuss some of those different, some of those different items. But that's the information. I can answer any questions that anybody might have on those.
Seeing no commissioners with any questions, let you also go on to item ten, what staff level projects have been approved.
Nothing, nothing really significant on those. The Rosie Food and Wine Outdoor Patio Edition, we're still working on that. Going to the pending projects, we have a parking lot addition at 111 Campus Drive, and some things associated with Whataburger. We've got the Maranatha, Assemblies of God Carport. We've got the area behind us, the final development plan for the Bradford Berry property on Mayfair. And we have a renovation of a couple of apartments at the retreat at Indian Lake. And I can answer any questions that the commission would have on those, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Martin, I believe you were lit up first?
Yes, I just had a quick question on the Tailgate Brewery. The last time it came up, there was a large mural. We deferred it to allow them to package it up with their, the rest of their site plan development stuff. Do they still have a mural, or what, what happened with that?
Yeah, they dropped it, but they have not come, we have not heard anything since that meeting. So there hasn't been any resubmission, and we haven't, yeah, we haven't been working with them on that particular issue.
Okay.
Commissioner Slattery, you were lit up, that was your question, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was also my question, but I have another question. So the Rosie Food and Wine Patio, where is that going to go exactly? They're right on the end, and they really don't have any space. Is it going to be out front?
Yeah.
Yeah, are they going to take over?
Timothy, do you, I think it's on the front.
It's in the front. Out their front door, they've got some, some space where the building kind of cuts in. So they'll have the patio there, and they still have room to route pedestrian traffic on the outside of that fence.
How much capacity, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Slattery.
How much capacity are they trying to squeeze in there?
Uh, I think it's, it's not very many. It's, it's a few seats.
Okay.
It, it's not anything large.
I'll be inside.
Director Free?
Yeah, and I think that business has been wildly successful as well. And so that's, that's good, good to see.
Yeah, I was going to say, go and just kind of close this out with planning director comments?
Yes. I'll go over the things that were submitted yesterday. That'll be mostly items that you'll be seeing at our very busy May planning commission meeting. Some of those items will be a warehouse, site plan, Crane Wallace Warehouse. It's seventy-five hundred square foot on Avondale. You'll, you'll be seeing the Dutch Brothers site plan for Dutch Brothers Coffee. There's Floor and Decor site plan. That's a very large seventy-five thousand square foot flooring, wholesale and retail business on Indian Lake Boulevard, sort of over, over here, north of the memory care. There'll be a lot, it's close to the, it's not at the intersection of, of Maple Drive North, but it's the lot just south of that.
What's the name of the?
It's called Floor and Decor. And so it's a pretty substantial retail, huh? Yeah, and that empty lot where the trees and it's kind of overgrown and everything. And it backs up to Aladdin, and it backs up to Mayfair and Bradford Berry here. So there, and then with the development of that, we're, we're having them on their parking lot in their rear to have connectivity to the future development that'll happen on the Bradford Berry property. So there'll be, there'll be a way to, to meander from Main Street all the way over to Indian, Indian Lake. So that's, that's coming at next month's meeting. Also, we have Hendersonville Warehouse Site Plan that most likely will be back on the agenda for, in May. That's a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet of, of industrial warehouse. Then we have, that one is, it's on Innovation Way. It's near Dos Margaritas, sort of in that area, off New Shackle, in that, in that area, backs up to the railroad track. Then also, we have McCarr, McCarrill Heating and Air. They're doing a twenty-four hundred square foot addition to their existing building, as well as a new five thousand square foot building. And that's on Molly Walton. And this is something, remember, if you remember, a little bit less than two years ago, we did change some things in the industrial zoning that allow people to make better use of the, the limited existing industrial property that we have. And, and so this is kind of the fruit of some of, some of that, that stuff. And then also, there probably will be on the agenda, Volunteer Park, at Arrowhead, a site plan for park improved, significant park improvements off of Mustang Lane, Lakeview Center. That's the area that's right across from the existing location of Sanders Ferry Pizza, that vacant lot, that was approved back in two thousand eighteen. They're coming back with the same submission for approval of that. It's a mixed-use development, a commercial on the first floor and residential on the second and third floors. So that'll be, that'll be coming back on, into May, May meeting. And also, we've got a couple of things from Millstone, the backside of Millstone that hasn't developed yet. That is preliminary plats for that, that area. So that area's fixing to develop. That's going to be a total of about eighty-three additional lots back in that area. And then on the staff level, we have 111 Campus and 117 Campus Drive. These are parking lot additions that are converting existing home to, to office, office build, to, from residential to office. And I think I had one more. Yeah, also, the TriStar Medical Center, Center is having a new birthing and NICU renovation, and so they have a site plan that we're working with them on. That probably will be at the staff level and probably won't be coming to, to the planning commission. So as you can see, there are a lot of, there's a lot of things going on. So it is, it is really ticked up here in the last couple of months. And I can answer any questions, anybody, anybody would have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I didn't get to, to participate in the hearing because I'm up here. But I wanted to thank the planning commission for the, the great job that you guys did. A lot of the emails that I've received over the last month, it's, it's been very delightful because up until our last meeting, there was always kind of undertones of anxiety. And that has now changed to excitement. So I wanted to thank you for that, and I wanted to thank the Free Hill folks for having us over, and for Alderman Jeff Sassy and Alderman Lee Peterson. With that in mind, hearing from Mr. John Prentice, I would love to hear, once we approve it, what the timeframe might be to start seeing some of this be implemented.
Director Free?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're looking at, now that this has been adopted, the next step is, you know, there'd been discussion about, does this need to go to BOMA for approval? And I, and, but the approval stops here. But it is a responsibility to report it out to BOMA. So in some fashion, this document will finish it, will make these changes that were discussed tonight. We'll put the final packet together, and we will forward that to BOMA to report out to them. The next step will be, now that we know what the future land use is for that area, then the planning staff will start immediately. We'll start looking at create, what, what areas that we need to create new zones for. And probably, we're, we discussed it this morning, we're probably looking at sometime over the next four to five months, we'll be bringing something back to the planning commission that will address the areas that we feel strongly enough that we need to go ahead and change the zoning on. The two areas for sure that we're going to have, we're going to need to do zoning, rezonings on, are going to be the Old Town Commercial and Old Town Residential. And you will see, as some of the items that are discussed here tonight, that are coming, coming up in the next, next month, you will see in this interim, there probably will be some, some projects that'll be using the current zoning and applying for, for approval. And they, most of those would probably be by right approval until the, the zoning does change. So that's what we're looking at, is, is to have something back to the planning commission in about four months. And then the reason, the reason it's not just next month or in two months, we're, we're making significant changes, and we really want to make sure it's well-thought-out, and we think of every angle, every loophole, every, every, every nook and cranny of a new rezoning or a new zoning district that we have some, in one of these areas. And we want to make sure that it's right, you know, so that we don't, in a rush, create something that then creates a problem that we maybe didn't realize at the time. So we do need to, to think it through. And we're creating something kind of from scratch as well, especially in the Old Town Commercial and the Old Town Residential. Outside of that, we're just, we're now going to evaluate if there are other areas that we also need to, need to rezone. We've got all these areas along West Main Street that I think we're going to have, it's going to be different than the commercial zoning that's there. So you've got general commercial zoning. So we're looking at probably something, as we discussed, that might be a West Main Street commercial. And then it would have the items that would support this. So, you know, that, that may be, that may be part of our rezoning as well. But what we'll do, and what our commitment is, when we're, when we're doing the rezonings, and they will be massive rezonings, when we do that, we'll do as we did with this. We will, we will send postcards and, and information to every, every affected property owner to give them every opportunity, instead of just putting it in the paper. And, you know, if they see it, they see it. We're, we're going to make every intention to go beyond what is required by law, you know, so that we've given, because we're, we're going to be making, we're going to be making some significant changes. But now those significant changes will be supported by the underlying future land use plan that's well-thought-out. And appreciate the help, Kim Lee Horn, you know, provided on this, and give us a document that then will let us move forward on rezoning, and rezoning on firm footing, where we're not just haphazardly rezoning property and changing things that impact what people can do today versus what they can do tomorrow. But it's based on a real plan and a very thought-out plan that's been vetted by the community, where the community has, has had ample input in it as well. So that's, that's what I'm anticipating in the next four to five months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Free. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn, and I'll, I'll take that second. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all again for your time. Thank you, everybody, for being here.